Regular meeting of the city council of Trinidad, Colorado until May 6th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Um, first thing is, uh, the pledge, if you don't mind leading us.
Absolutely. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I might be humored for just a moment, um, trying to take the opportunity to, um, thank Mike Valentine for being here tonight. Um, Mike, thank you so much for leading us through this time. It's, uh, I don't think, I think there's very, very few people that know the stress, uh, and effort that's required to do that. So, thank you for everything you've done. And we, uh, we all joked with you about changing your phone number, but it's maybe something. So, uh, thank you very much, Michael. Also, um, we're so happy to welcome Tara tonight, Tara Marshall, our new city manager. We have, uh, very, very high hopes and, um, look forward, uh, our hope is that we're looking forward to a long and fruitful organization. If, uh, just, um, meeting protocols, please turn off cell phones, be respectful, take personal conversations into the lobby. The following items are on file for consideration of council. Uh, we'll just have roll call and then I'll do the proclamation.
Debono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trahill?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Turn it off, turn it off. Hang on, hang on, hang on.
All right.
Power off. I know how to do it.
Um, all right. So, uh, before we move on to approval of the agenda, I'm just gonna take this opportunity, um, tonight we have Mrs. Lucero here, the CEO, um, Mrs. Stefano, CNO, Mr. Archileta, the CIO of Mount San Rafael Hospital. This is, um, from the office of the mayor, of which I'm filling in for tonight. It's a proclamation in honor of National Hospital Week. Um, I would say, uh, I know, I for one, am very grateful for our hospital services, um, as well as obviously the entire community. We have had a major, I would say, a major, um, overhaul of the hospital there with the facilities and I think that, uh, the quality of care is excellent. So, thank you for being here tonight. National Hospital Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025. Whereas National Hospital Week, celebrated annually during the first full week of May, is a time to recognize and appreciate the dedicated individuals who work tirelessly within our hospitals to provide compassionate and quality care. And whereas our local hospital and clinics pay, play a vital role in our community offering a wide range of medical services, including emergency care, specialized treatments, and ongoing support for individuals and families. Whereas the staff of our hospital, including nurses, doctors, technicians, and support personnel demonstrate unwavering commitment to patient well-being, often going above and beyond to ensure the best possible care. And whereas this year's National Hospital Week theme, hashtag #WeAreHealthCare, I'm glad I learned to read hashtag, highlights the diverse and dedicated individuals who make up healthcare workforce, recognizing their critical contributions to our community. And whereas in 2025, our very own Mount San Rafael Hospital was named one of the top 20 critical access hospitals in the United States for overall performance by the Charis Center for Rural Health out of 1,400 critical access hospitals in the country. That's a, a real accomplishment. That's amazing. Good job, guys. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Williamson, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Hospital Week. In the city of Trinidad, and call upon all residents to acknowledge and show your appreciation to the hospital and their dedicated staff for their valuable contributions and unwavering commitment to our community's health and well-being during this special week. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. Mayor Pro Tem, Aaron Williamson, today's date, May 6th, 2025.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Williamson and also city council members. We really appreciate it. I will share this with staff next week as we celebrate, um, Hospital Week with all of our staff and also we celebrate, um, one of the top 20 critical access hospitals in the United States.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Uh, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Second? Second. V. Oral.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Um, item three, policy items and staff reports.
First that, I want to thank council for this opportunity. I'm extremely blessed. I feel so honored to be here and I'm looking forward to working with you for many years into the future. I want to thank Mike Valentine for this week, for onboarding, for staying around, for walking me through so many of the critical issues and for handing over things that are in really good shape. So, thank you, Mike. I want to thank the staff that I've had an opportunity to meet and I want to thank in advance all the staff that I'm going to be meeting with in the coming weeks. This first month, I wanted to report out that I'm focusing on meeting employees. Um, that's not just department heads. I'm gonna get out to all the different various locations where we have staff working, introduce myself, give them an opportunity to know me, talk about how the city manager position can help support them in the work they're doing. I'll be reaching out to you on Thursday and Friday to set up one-on-one meetings so that I can start getting a sense of what your current agenda is, what you think are critical issues, and where your focuses lay. And then, um, continuing to work with department heads to get up to speed on critical issues and ongoing projects. That's my goal for the first 30 days. So, I'll be back to report in two weeks on how that's going and announcing some goals for the second and third for the 60 and 90 days. So, once again, I'm honored to be here. I'm picking up the reins and getting on-boarded and I cannot thank the city enough for this opportunity and I just cannot thank, uh, the staff enough for the quality that they're bringing to their positions.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, thank you.
No report this story, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, item four, petition or communications oral written, uh, for a Trinidad Community Foundation presentation of proposed fitness course at Los Ninos Park.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name's Lisa Camarillo. I'm the president of Trinidad Community Foundation and, um, what we're talking about doing here, you've got, you've probably got a hold of this, which is, should be, you should have already gotten this. So, one of the things that Trinidad Community Foundation has done and it's evolved over the years is, um, we've done lots of things with health and wellness and our primary purpose right now is to regain our brand. And our brand really is the importance of, um, being an advocate of health and wellness and being able to provide that inside of our community and be known for that, whether that's a leg up, whether that is, um, helping small businesses, whether that is mentoring, um, bit, small business people who start their own business and more importantly, helping our town mentor them in the same direction. What we did was we, um, we found, we found something that was compatible that reached out to ages 13 and above, um, to complement the, the pickleball walking project that Jared Chatterley is, um, currently over and that is at that Los Ninos Park, which is right behind Toyota. You're familiar with where it is. We chose that strategically. We initially thought maybe Central Park because it could be seen from the road. Um, but we kind of liked this idea because it's already gated off and it's complimentary to some of the other activities and workout things and it's secured. So, it won't just get, you know, tear, torn up and, and, um, well, trashed with, if that's a better word, I just couldn't even find it. So, that's why we did that. What we're asking for today is just your consideration of the gift that, uh, this is considered a gift from the Trinidad Community Foundation. This is a contribution of the equipment, the shipping, plus we are willing to, um, contribute an additional $3,000 towards concrete pad. And we are, um, we're also going to provide repairs to the previous existing workout equipment that we did put at Central Park years ago. It's a little worn out, torn up and trashed. We wanted to use that word. But what we want to do is we want to take some of that money and we, we have this money put aside to really help with, um, with the health and wellness initiative here in Trinidad. But the equipment, provide a little bit of money towards the concrete pad and then we'd like to then go back and just freshen up the existing stuff that it is at Central Park so that we can keep the city just bustling and going. Um, the health and wellness initiative is really important because this is what's going to sustain and bring back to life a little bit more of that youth that we see in the being. And we want to just provide them, you know, we want to provide more of the, um, you know, just the ability for people to come in and, and do that. And it's on their own accord and it is of course at their own risk. As you can see in the pictures and you can look it up online, we provided the website, it's not risky as far as there's no weights tied to it, there is no straps, there's no, there's nothing like that. These are independent, um, machines. They're not designed for bodybuilding. They're designed for warming up, stretching and keeping vibrant lives, you know, just, you know, hey, I walked the path, I did the pickleball or I need to go and do a couple of more stretches before I actually go in there because there are a lot of injuries tied to just going out and saying, hey, I'm gonna start working out today. And that doesn't always generally work out for people. Any questions for me? Wait, I'm gonna do questions.
Um, yeah, if, uh, if it's appropriate, you can entertain questions.
Certainly.
I noticed that, um, some of the money, thank you, first of all, it's a great idea and really thankful for this contribution. Um, I noticed something about lighting, uh, that one of the things that TCF is gonna request the city of Trinidad do is include lighting for the fitness area in plans. And is that plans for the pickleball court or what plans are you talking about?
Just however it works out, you know, we can use, if we can use those lights, that's what we do. Really what we had in mind was something like a solar-powered parking lot. Like, it doesn't have to be anything big. So, we're looking, you know, at something relatively inexpensive.
Okay. And it's really, everything that we're doing here is meant to complement the actual projects that you're already doing. It's not to take the light away from that and it's, it's only to collaborate. We are obviously not gonna provide any of the labor behind this. Cause Lou's lazy. He's got a blocked foot, so he can't do it. But we're not gonna be providing that. So, these are just things that we're saying, hey, we'll provide, we're gonna provide the resources for this. Um, of course, we're hiring our own inspector on our side. That's just to protect Trinidad Community Foundation in the actual, um, on the ground stuff when it gets delivered, make sure, you know, we check it off. But we are expecting the city to provide their own doing so.
Just in addition, we may need a storage, this, uh, the, the lead time to, uh, for deliveries can be ten to fourteen minutes.
We don't need a storage area.
Time limit.
Phil, Phil Long Organization owns half the buildings.
Well, we may have to get it over there, but just, uh, because even, we either have to unpack it and it's the packing material that Mike damaged it, but yeah, this is, this is very durable equipment.
We think between all of the areas that we have available to us to store this, that probably won't be a problem, but we are, we are short of people. So, that's where the city's gonna need to come in on providing the, the legs on this matter.
All right. Um, any further questions, comments?
Uh, Lisa, thank you Colonel, thank you. Uh, that's, yeah, you can never have enough fitness and we all need to have more fitness. And that's a great concept. There's a similar course in Pueblo at Menacua by St. Mary Corwin that has stations set up, similar to what you're talking about. So, I think it's, it's gonna benefit the whole community as well as, like you stated, keeping some of the youth here, uh, involved and organized. So.
I did forget to just put this one thing. One of the things that we're doing this, we are, we are actually going to, um, put up a sign, like a big sign, like a placard sign that this was, that this area was donated by Trinidad Community Foundation, expressing what our pillars are and what we actually do and what we're hoping to continue to provide for the city.
Kind of like your mission statement.
Yes.
Yeah, mission statement and of course the city.
Right. No, thank both of you.
The only thing we would ask also is if, if you agree that we can continue to pursue this because we'll need some help, best of, and advice and budget, et cetera.
We can just have that.
With no commitment.
From the, from the city managers.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you so much. We, we appreciate the gesture.
Thank you. And we wanted to formally thank Mr. Valentine too. We recognize everything that you've done and we want to welcome Tara as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, item, that includes item A. Item B will be Lord DiBella from the High Tail Deer Sculpture signage.
Um, as some of you may know, um, my younger brother, Robert Gregory DiBella, was a wildlife biologist who both before and after graduated from CSU with his degree, conducted many wildlife studies in Colorado, Alaska, Montana, and Idaho. Um, because of his love of the area, he returned here to Trinidad to pursue his passion of art with his photography and with his sculpture and with his drawing. Um, he was just starting to gain his national attention when he died at the age of 33, truly brain and urisum. Um, Dan Rosetti was a friend of Greg's and he spearheaded a fundraising event to go ahead and purchase the seven, eight size of one of Greg's sculptures, which was High Tail, was the name of it. Until recently, the sculpture has been at the corner of Animas and Modica Drive in Chameau Park. Um, vandals had attempted to saw the head of the sculpture in addition to damaging the leg of the sculpture as well as some of one of the horns. Dan very generously transported the sculpture to the Loveland Foundry to have the repairs made. He both took it up and then returned it. Right now, the sculpture is being stored at Space to Create. Um, I don't know if anyone is familiar with the sculpture park that's in Loveland. It's a phenomenal place that the Loveland Foundry has just an amazing array of sculptures. And so, uh, they had worked on the sculpture originally when it was first done and we took it back there. Um, the repairs were completed on March 1st. I understand that the city may be considering moving it from that space possibly next to City Hall where there is better security as well as lighting. And, uh, for that, I want to thank you very much for doing that. That's very important. I appreciate that. Um, I contacted the Loveland Foundry to produce a plaque to be able to use with the sculpture. And my siblings and I would like to donate this to the city to be put with the sculpture that, uh, you then can go ahead when you do put it up, you would have that. And I just got it in, so I'd like to present it to you. And so, if I may just read it, it says, "High Tail, Our Greg DiBella, 1958 to 91, an artist and wildlife biologist, born and raised in Trinidad, captured the grace, strength, and fluidity of the white-tailed deer found in this region." This is the first piece, and I really want this to be only the first piece of public art created by a Trinidad native and displayed in the city of Trinidad. So, if I can present this to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You have facts, too.
Yeah.
And there has to be a feeling to, to be able to.
Um, Lisa, on, on behalf of the city, thank, thank you so much. Uh, it's so deeply meaningful to hear the story to that and I appreciate it and I'm sure all of Trinidad appreciates it too. And, uh, it's a lovely confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Um, the public comment section offers an opportunity for any citizen to express opinions or ask questions regarding city services, policies, or other matters of community concern and any agenda items that are not part of a scheduled public hearing. Citizens will have five minutes for comments. This time, limited established to provide efficiency in the conduct of the meeting and allow equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak. An immediate response should not be expected as issues are typically referred to the city staff or follow-up or research and are then reported back to council and the individual who initiated the comment or inquiry. Written materials presented to council must be submitted to the city clerk as the speaker approaches the podium. Uh, Mr. Les Downs will be the timekeeper. Our first speaker will be Brad Kirby, um, on Intertube.
Thank you. Um, thank you, city council. I'm Brad Kirby. I have the Business Purgatory Murder Room company, Intertube rental company. I've had the last six years, I'm on seventh year. I've heard y'all have come up with some rules and regulations on intertubing, which I was not informed of or have heard about. I've heard you're having maybe a vote on that tonight. If I would, I'd like y'all to table it until I have some say-so in the, in the regulations. So, if you would, just table that for a week or two, whatever it takes for me to help y'all decide what is good and what is bad. I haven't heard the, the rules and regulations yet that y'all propose. I think I will tonight. I'm looking forward to that. So, if you would, just please table that until we all get together and decide what's good for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Um, Mr. Roy Miller, AKA Gunny?
Yeah.
On drainage.
I already gave the pictures to our new city, uh, manager. About three weeks ago, they got, went in there and sliced out that one area. Then I noticed it's undermined. Soil has left underneath the road. So, it might be a little bit more difficult than it was originally anticipated to repair. But, you know, anyway, it's up there at that lovely Cougar Canyon Resort area. If you need a guided tour of that Cougar Canyon Resort area, I'd be more than happy to give it to you. I'm an expert on it. Okay?
Thank you.
The 110 room convention center, the equestrian riding stables and our Jack Nicholson golf course. I'm very knowledgeable about it if you need a tour, okay? Now, last but least, of course, you're all sick of the homeless thing. I'm quite, uh, knowledgeable about it. I helped Pastor Clay in the park on Sundays. I know all the homeless and I guess it's $300 fine out to get caught camping in town. I don't know, man. And then there's always lazy worthless people. Two, three percent of the population will not work. It's been proven throughout history. 1607 Jamestown, Virginia, the first settlement, they brought the cop guys over from Europe that just sat underneath the tree all day in the, in the shade and they wouldn't work. Back in them days, you didn't work, you didn't eat, but they wouldn't work. So, when the boat came back, resupply and all that, they sent them back to England. They called it idleness, not laziness, but it's the same thing. Okay? Then, you know, in times of great famine, two, three percent of the population will hunt the other 97% as a food source. It's been proven throughout history. But I'm getting off track here. One thing I need to say is, uh, as far as I'm concerned, you made the wrong decision. Find everybody $300, you know, the jails be full if you guys get down to it. Cause they're camping in town. There's a couple tents on the city right now, down nearby the river right now, like a park. You know, whatever you guys, but the wrong decision. And being a Christian that I claim to be, I'm not the world's greatest Christian at all. I don't know how many of you guys have bibles or are, complain to be Christians or whatever. I have no idea. But in the book of, uh, Luke, chapter 16, paragraph 19, there's little, there's half a page on Lazarus. The old beggar in the cities of 2,000 years ago out there in the mid-east area. Yeah, Lazarus. You might want to read that page. Cause, and I'll tell you what, if God exists and I'm pretty sure he does, I'm still alive. I shouldn't be alive, but I am. Okay? I have no idea why he keeps me alive. But when it's all said and done, you're standing before him, this decision you made to throw the homeless out of town here, just ain't gonna work for you. All right? I pity for you. I have, you have my pity. Cause it's not gonna work for you. But it's in the Bible. There will always be poor, there will always be homeless. It's not gonna go away. And trying to throw them out of town here and find them $300 because they're camping in town, it's not the solution. It's the easy way out though. I guarantee you guys took the easy way out. You know? Now, if you go enforce that regulation, then jails be full. Don't be room for anybody else, I guess. Whatever. I wish you all the best.
Mr. Dan Rosetti, I'm the city manager.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, um, good evening. I just come up, I'd like to wish Ms. Turner Marshall good luck in the future. I believe council made the right decision and the people, the committee off the street. And I give you kudos for that. Uh, just to let you know, I, I believe she was the right choice. It's nice to have somebody with common sense and somebody with political background like her. And I really think she's gonna do wonders for the city. So, if there's anything that anybody needs, reach out, touch them, don't be afraid to talk to the public. And, uh, I'm there for you. I did have a concern with the project coming up. Spoke to, or talked to a couple of you today and all it felt, but I'll be bringing it to her in the future. So, I did get with her before and said I'd like to meet with her before I come to council. So, you guys might not see me as much as you used to. So, good luck, Tara. You got a hell of a job ahead of you and you need it. Thank you.
Um, Carlos Lopez on River Access Ordinance.
Hello, everyone. Council staff, new city manager, congratulations. Um, I'm coming up here tonight to discuss the River Access ordinance. I've been under the impression that I was going to have a future meeting where we would be invited. And then I find out today at four o'clock that there had been new kind of, um, adjustments made to this particular piece of policy unbeknownst to what was discussed in last week's work session where direction was given from council to staff to reach out to us partners. None was made. In fact, I was even in the building yesterday because I had a Cora request made the week of the notification for the original, um, work session on Thursday last week prior. And it's interesting as I started getting into it, I, I found out some things that I really want to impress upon you. First of all, I'm in favor of an ordinance. In fact, I'm in favor of two ordinances. One, that's for construction and one that's for outdoor recreational commercial use. Want to be clear about that. But what I do have concerns about is starting back in 2023 when this started, there was email threads between then mayor-elect Karen Griege and Mr. Jared Chatterley about this particular piece. I don't have these printed up just yet, but I'm happy to get them printed for you because I just found them today. I tried to get them printed yesterday, but there's thousands of documents on this drive. But, one of the emails on November 30th says, "Hey, Mary elect," smiley face, "just wanted to loop you in. I sent this to Audra and Steve. Not sure how appropriate it is to loop you in without notifying the city manager that I did, but I just want to put this on your radar as something that needs to be addressed here in the near future. Thanks for all you do. Hope you had a great Thanksgiving. Jared." And there was a response from the mayor. "Thank you. This project has taken up a ton of your time. I agree with you. We need to establish some guidelines and have a common understanding as to who is in charge of the project. I know Howard Lackey is always lurking on the sidelines as well. Thank you." There's a little bit more about personal things for the holidays, which are not perfect. There's a little bit more about personal things for the holidays, which are not pertinent. There's a response from Mr. Chatterley saying, "Totally an important lady," about the personal comments, and Ms. Griege responded one more time. "So if you want the 4-1-1, give me a call." So right there, according to the charter, chapter 6, 6.6, council is not to interfere with administrative functions. So I find this to be, at minimum, an ethics violation, which is something that was brought forward against Mayor Rico in the past with Mr. H.L. Bowman. Somewhat different, but still, it's in the charter. There is a line of command where the mayor goes through the city manager or city attorney. That's where it ends. You're not supposed to leapfrog over others and conduct business on the sidebar. That is something that I want to impress upon you today, that this particular piece started years ago, but it was built upon something that doesn't have good foundation. It's based off of an ethics violation in the start. Now, what I'm asking of you all tonight, put a vote to this measure and kill it and bring forward two pieces of policy as opposed to this one that's still wedged together. One, that is for construction groups specifically, doing any work on the river, and two, one that's for outdoor recreational groups that are in commercial capacity like myself. Ms. Griege last weekend in the session also admitted that she had been working with Mr. Chatterley and the development group on this particular piece. So even right there, even without these email threads that I have, she admitted that she had done this, and you were all here to remember that. Unfortunately, you weren't. But I just want to state this. Is this the kind of policy you want to start with based on an ethics violation? Again, I'm in favor of good policy, one that even is applicable to me and my business, but this is not the one.
One minute.
So again, I have other emails in here that I have yet to go through for my core request, and I'm interested to find out who else corresponded with the mayor in this capacity. I would officially like to make an ethics complaint at this time against the mayor herself. I wish she was here. I did not know she was not going to be here this evening because I would like to have said it right here, looking at her, saying, "You messed up." In fact, when Mr. Rico had done it, there was even a lawsuit tethered to it where the city had to pay out money. I hope it doesn't come to that because we're already in a deficit. But please, think about this. Ms. Ogletry, you said you wanted two pieces of legislation. The staff didn't even do what you asked. I don't want to have the tail wagged at all. Thank you for your time.
Item five, council reports. Ms. Ogletry, we'll start.
Well, I was in Tucson last week. My son got married, and I was in the hospital. And I was laughing when you were talking about that hospital thing. I'm really grateful for our hospital. I was in the hospital in Tucson for 24 hours, 11 of which I spent in what I called the pit of despair. Little idea what was going on. And I thought, this would not happen in Trinidad, and it wouldn't. And so I do think we need to be more thankful, but that's all I have to report.
Glad you packed.
The Los Ananas County Veterans Committee, they're presenting the annual Armed Forces Day Parade Saturday, May 17th in downtown Trinidad. The Fort Carson Honor Guard will be present. 9 o'clock is set up for the parade. There's gonna be a ceremony at Civic Park. After the parade, followed by a picnic at Chaminot Park on Saturday. So that's the scoop on the Armed Forces Day Parade. Also, Mayor Griege called me yesterday and asked me if I would mention that longtime city employee, John Ferraro, passed away, and that was very unfortunate. He worked for the city for a long time, starting back in more than 40 years ago, I believe. So that's all I have for the council reports for May 6th.
I don't have any. We have a meeting coming up on the 29th for ARCO. We'll look forward to hearing that. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
This weekend, we celebrated Cinco de Mayo, and I'd like to thank everybody that participated, volunteered. Julie, thank you for your help in helping everything clean up, put up, and maintain. And on behalf of them, I'd just like to thank all the generous donations that we received, the city of Trinidad, and many numerous others that helped get this festival off the ground. We have surpassed our numbers that we did last year, and we have secured our scholarship for a whole other year for future students at TSC. Also, I'm just so grateful for everyone coming out and having a good time, enjoying themselves. It was a great time. Look forward to next year. We're also looking forward to the Chili Festival, looking forward to seeing everybody out there. Maybe get a few more volunteers out there would help. So I just thank everybody because it was just extremely humbling out there to see our whole community come together, and I just thank everybody that came out, and that's all I got.
Nothing more except for Parks and Rec is just excited to pickleball. Waiting to throw the rackets around, so. Gas Gate Park coming up. Suppose we'll be getting it refurbished, so. We like work for Parks and Rec.
I have no report at this time, so we'll be moving on. Item six, consent agenda approval. Consent agenda can be adopted by consent motion. Consent agenda will be allowed. Target vote on motion and consent agenda. At the request of city council member for individual consideration. Items on consideration tonight are, A, approval of regular meeting minutes of April 15th, 2025, and special meeting minutes of April 28th, 2025. Approval of bills in the amount of $2,458,622.50. Approval of payroll, April 26th, 2025, through May 9th, 2025, in the amount of $471,288.8. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Second?
Second.
The vote?
Tabono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Truhel?
Yes.
Ogletry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Six thirty-seven, we have a consent agenda. Item seven, public hearing. Seven, a public hearing for the consideration of new retail marijuana products manufacturing facility application filed by ISO 99 LLC at 3710 Freedom Road. I'll open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Could the applicants come forward, please? Thank you. Before you identify yourself, I'm gonna have you as a little test.
Okay. Do you swear in a binding test my hairball to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening. Would you please identify yourselves for record if you would?
Bad news.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jeffrey Francis.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen. You are both hard owners of the applicant LLC this evening?
That's right.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the first thing I want to ask you is, have you had a chance to review your application? And can you attest to its veracity or its accuracy?
Yes.
Okay, good. No trick question, you know, just wanted to make sure that you're willing to say to the applicant.
I endeavor to answer.
Right, exactly, exactly. So the applicant this evening is ISO 99 LLC. Is that correct?
That's right.
Colorado Limited Life Building Corporation, in good standing, formed on or about September 16, 2024?
That's right.
Okay, good. Thank you. And you, gentlemen, you have a very handy kind of schematic on the ownership of this. And I know you probably can't read it from there, but yeah, but this is, Mr. Davis, you own 25%, I believe.
That's right.
Mr. Francis, you own 25%?
That's right.
And then Mr. Dow Worsum owns 50%?
That's right.
Okay, of the LLC applicant?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Now, gentlemen, I want to ask you, the address that we're talking about here is 3710 Freedom Road in Trinidad?
Yes.
Okay, and if you know, that is industrial zoning. Does that sound correct?
That is very correct.
Okay, and as the Mayor Pro Tem said, this is an application for a retail marijuana product manufacturing facility license. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, now, would you please tell council, if you can, and I know I'm speaking with you, Mr. Davis, you were telling me today, what you're planning on doing if this license application is accepted, but would you please tell council what it is you would like to do with this license type?
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Davis because I'll just talk too much. I have nothing to do, so he knows how to be brief.
So our purpose is to produce essentially pharmaceutical-grade cannabinoids. So take the plant material and extract 99.9% pure THC or THC-A or whatever CBD, whatever the cannabinoid of choice is. We have some patented technology. We can use to do that very efficiently. And that then will be sold. We're not making infused products or anything like that. We're just making pharmaceutical-grade cannabinoids, and those will be sold to manufacturers for different things. So for example, you know, if you're making edibles, you can then have an actual pharmaceutical-grade ingredient to include in your edible. So the idea is to, because right now they're using basically, you know, wild harvested materials that are extracted, and every batch is different. And so it's difficult to have good quality control on the things you're making. And so we hope to help with that issue by providing, you know, truly pure cannabinoids to people to use.
I like to analogize it to a baker working with 100% flour, which is what we would produce versus, you know, something more typical like 87%, which is what they have to deal with in today's terms. So we'd like to think that we're removing a lot of the mystery.
Is it correct that your customers would be other marijuana-licensed facilities?
That's 100% correct. Other manufacturers.
Okay, and in like a marijuana-infused product license?
That's correct.
Okay, so that the MIPs license holder might buy your product, again, as you were explaining to me today, so to like infuse, say, gummies, if that is what they were doing?
Exactly.
Okay, and use your product to infuse it to make it a marijuana product?
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I want to say, and we know a lot of the answers to these questions, but I just want to bring this out for the record. You do already have your conditional state license. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you have been conditionally approved by the state of Colorado?
I don't know if you call it conditional. I think we've been formally approved because we've already received our license.
Right, it says conditional. I think it's conditioned upon local approval.
You bet that. Okay, then the answer is yes.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. And just, I know I touched on this, but the ownership of ISO 99 LLC is 25% you, Dr. Davis, 25% you, Mr. Francis, and 50% Mr. Worsum. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I know you have in your application, there's a financial interest. There's a $500,000 promissory note from ISOL 1 LLC to ISO 99 LLC?
That's correct.
Okay, and is it fair to say that ISOL 1 is kind of a mother LLC to ISO 99, for lack of a better expression?
No, that's exactly right. The technology we use to produce the pharmaceutical-grade cannabinoids was developed in the company ISOL 1. And then when we got ready to, so we spent a couple of years doing that, and then when we got ready to commercialize it, this is our first commercial adventure here in Trinidad, the lawyers involved with keeping us out of trouble said, you know, "You need a Colorado LLC to commercialize in Colorado, hold a Colorado license."
It was highly recommended.
Highly recommended. So that's what, so we formed ISO 99 last fall prior to applying to the state of Colorado for our MDDU license group. And so ISO 1 is sort of the mothership that holds the intellectual property that we're actually going to be commercializing through ISO 99 here in Trinidad.
And ISOL 1 is kind of your landlord. I know it's a subletting, but you're subletting from ISOL 1, who is renting the landlord or their tenant from El Moro LLC. Is that correct?
That's correct. El Moro is the company that holds that property, and then ISOL 1 leased it from them. And so then we're subleasing it to ISO 99 since ISOL 1 won't actually be operating in Colorado, so. Anyway, it made it more complicated than.
Our council didn't intend to make it complicated, but it ultimately.
When the lawyers got involved, we just started.
Don't laugh at that. Just kidding, just kidding. And also, counsel, I want to say for the record that the conditional use permit for this property, for this type of business, was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 10th of 2018. That, too, is part of your packet. It was a different applicant and different individuals, but that is when the conditional use permit was approved for this property, for this type of business. So, gentlemen, just to kind of elaborate on my earlier point, El Moro LLC rents to ISOL 1 LLC, a Nevada corporation, who is subletting to ISO 99 LLC?
Colorado.
A Colorado LLC, absolutely. And that is a, the lease, a sublease going to ISO 99 LLC is a 24-month lease agreement beginning on July 1st of 2024. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
I'm not gonna hold you to any of this. I just want to, you know.
You absolutely can if you want to.
Okay, good. Good. I'm gonna hold you to that. No, just kidding. And then, okay, and then the effective date of the sublease, I notice, was November 21, 2024, going until July 1st of 2026, going to ISOL 1, ISO 99, correct?
Yeah, it matches the term of the original lease.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to ask you, you touched on this earlier, Dr. Davis, but does ISO 99 LLC have other marijuana businesses in the state of Colorado?
No, this is the only one.
Okay, does that LLC, or excuse me, does the ISOL 1 LLC have other marijuana businesses?
No.
Okay, this is the only one anywhere?
That's right. This is our first commercialization of the technology.
Okay, all right, thank you. And counsel, I want to say that as part of the packet, there is a security agreement that is contained in there. Gentlemen, I want to ask you, do you have your certificate of occupancy yet?
No.
Okay, and what is your plan? What are you hoping to obtain your certificate of occupancy and be in business if you're approved by council first?
Well, we have the engineered drawings for the renovation of the facility and force-to-state license. Assuming we get approved here this evening, then we're ready to start construction. We brought our permits or whatever from the city for that. And we're intend to start construction next week, we hope. And the idea would be, you never know, but the idea would be to try to open on about June 1st.
And I know you have approval for a number of city officials.
Oh, yes. We work with the health department, the fire department, the police department. They've all been out and told us what they want to see in the facility. It's incorporated into our plans.
Okay, good.
And so we just need to build it basically to their specifications.
And you also have an operating agreement amongst the three of you. Okay, good, thank you. So I want to emphasize a number of points and bring this out for the record. But you understand that you cannot possess, buy, or sell cannabis as business owners or cannabis products unless and until your licenses are actually issued and possessed by you. You understand that?
We do.
Okay, good. And you understand that you can't get your local license until you have your certificate of occupancy. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, and then once you have your license, again, if approved, you understand you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate with city officials? Fire chief, police chief, city clerk, city manager, city attorney. You understand you have an ongoing obligation, correct?
We do.
Okay, and Dr. Davis, you signed an attestation saying you were familiar with the Trinidad Marijuana Code. with the Trinidad Marijuana Code. Are you also familiar with the Marijuana Code for the state of Colorado?
Yes.
Okay. And also the Department of Revenue Regulations for Regulation of Marijuana?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have legal counsel? So I think you said you did.
We did. We were represented by the Sunday Cedar Park. They're the ones who wrote the Colorado regulations. So we figured.
We're hoping they're. We hope they know what they're doing.
Yeah. You had to play that card. No, just kidding. Just kidding.
Well, it's an expensive card.
We were just not the player.
All right. Just so you can cite it. That's right. You understand that you were responsible for knowing when your licenses come up for renewal and you have to renew. And if you let your licenses lapse, you could, you could be suspended and not do business if you, if you let your licenses lapse. You understand that?
We do.
Okay. You also understand that you're not considered in the essential business by any, any measure. And so in times of water austerity, gas, electricity, you guys may be cut off from utilities.
What about a pandemic, though?
Well, as long as you stay. Yeah, that's right.
We do understand that.
Okay. And I have, well, I just want to say also that you, you're responsible for knowing the laws, both local and state laws. And if you violate, you understand you can lose your local, your local license for violations of the local Marijuana Code or any other legal violations. You understand that?
We would expect nothing less.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to say to counsel before I turn it over to them?
No, I think, I think Scott has, Dr. Davis has made this point at least a couple of times, which is we've spent a number of years, a number of dollars perfecting and working on the technology that was really fundamental to supply a pharmaceutical endeavor to develop cannabinoid-derived pharmaceuticals and therapeutics. I have psoriasis and psoriatic arthritis, and, and so this is a baby for me. And, and you know, like Dr. Davis said, when we met in 2015, this was a, this was our, this is what we always envisioned was possible. And, and this technology, it just, the fact that it's landing here in Trinidad, I'd like to think that that's a, we've got a really positive atmosphere here in the, in the, in the community that's gonna be supportive and, and we want to definitely reciprocate on all, on all fronts. Actually, I'll add one, one other point which hadn't come up, but probably should. And that is, we could, I mean, we're manufacturing, you know, cannabinoids to sell across the state of Colorado. We could have put the company anyway, anywhere. But we, we decided to put it in Trinidad just because we kind of like Trinidad. So I just want to put that in the record. I mean, we looked up around and, you know, the obvious, obvious metro places to put it. I mean, I'm a smart guy.
Metro's not as cooperative as some of the smaller venues.
Thank you. Les, is there any further questions on your end?
No, no. I turn it over to you, Mayor Pro Tem and your counsel.
We'll entertain questions from counsel, starting with you.
Well, thanks for choosing Trinidad as your, your stop to, to get your business started. I appreciate that. That's huge. Hopefully, there's some people in the way.
Thanks for playing.
How many people do you think you can get employed in?
Well, initially, we expect to have eight. That'd be the two of us plus six employees to support us. Hopefully, if we're successful, that number can, can grow. But just, you know, initially, that's what we're looking at.
With, with the, I'll just add that with the technology, it's, we're not looking for necessarily under, under skilled, unskilled labor. We're looking for, you know, even up to the MCIMs, Masters of Chemistry. So hopefully, we don't have to import those, but if we do, we do. Nonetheless.
Got a college.
I know you got a college. We've already been in contact with them. We're, we're looking forward to working with the college and, and in terms of looking at that talent.
Mr. Trujillo? Thank you for choosing Trinidad. Manufacturing seems to be the way that we need to start looking into. It's a great use of our industrial park and thank you for looking at us. And I believe this is going to be an amazing addition to our cannabis industry. So thank you so much. Counselman Chu?
Thank you again for choosing Trinidad. Appreciate it.
DeBono?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your investment, for seeing that this is the place you want to be, not north from here.
Yeah, maybe further south.
Counselwoman Ogletree?
A lot of the questions that I was gonna ask you have already been asked. I am really glad that you chose Trinidad. I think it gives us some encouragement when we think about a phase two for marijuana in Trinidad because the retail sales are, as you know, are.
Waiting.
Yes. And so it's good to see people who are thinking ahead and training people to do work that's more complicated and pharmaceutical. So I'm encouraged about that, especially since none of you are from Trinidad. Really glad and thankful that you're here. And I'm just wondering, are you growing the flower or are you buying?
No, we would just, we'll buy it. We've been talking, I mean, on the same street, you know, there's the Freedom Growers guys and Mary Jacy Sheeran. You know, they, they make a lot every year. So I don't think we have to go very far to find the biomass that we need for extraction.
That's fine. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you guys so much for being here tonight. I echo the sentiments. A lot of, a lot of my questions are already answered. And I too am grateful for you choosing Trinidad. I think, you know, we have a lot of discussions on council for economic welfare of the town. And I think it's important to bring the industry in, so I'm really glad to see you guys coming here. In effect, you guys coming to Trinidad is adding to new dollars in the town. It's, as I'm sure you can appreciate, it's the same as a country's gross domestic product, right? I mean, or bringing new dollars into the area. So thank you so much. One question I did have, and I suspect it would be purely speculative, but you are industry experts, so I don't think there's better people to ask. How, by speculation, how far out until there will be interstate commerce for that regulated product?
Yes.
No, there's, there's actually two answers to that. There is already interstate commerce in these products because when they wrote the law that legalized hemp-derived CBD, they banned, you know, anything that had more than 23% THC. But I don't know how familiar you are with cannabis plants. Cannabis plants don't make THC. They make a molecule called THC-A, which is an inactive form of, and if you can eat THC-A, like candy, it has no effect.
No psychotropic.
No psychotropic effects. And that's what the plant makes because it's a really good insecticide. That's what the plant makes. But if you heat it, i.e. people who smoke marijuana, then it changes from THC-A to THC and becomes psychoactive. So because of the way the hemp law was written, 0.3% THC, people are, all across the country are growing hemp and they test it when it's still in the field and it doesn't have any THC in it. And so if you look in Texas, for example, where cannabis is not legal, you can buy any product in any dispensary in Texas that you can buy in Colorado. And they all say they are hemp-derived. But that's because of a loophole in the federal law. And that's, that's.
It's a problem.
It's, it's a problem that states are beginning to figure out that the state of Colorado is working on legislation that would ban so-called hemp-derived cannabis products. Because it's a way of circumventing all the existing regulations for the products. So anyway, it's probably more of an answer.
So when you use the word loophole, it's a very large hole. And then to the, to the legalization question, I think, is, I don't know what your guess is.
I don't know. I would have thought by now it would. The majority of states have already legalized cannabis. I don't understand why it's not federally legal, but in the current environment in Washington, your guess is as good as mine. I don't know.
We, they, if, if there's any consolation, you know, one of the things that we would like to make sure that you guys understand completely, if it wasn't made subtly, is we are not a me-too company. So we are not producing anything like what anybody else has been producing, not just in this city, but in this state, not in the state, but in the country. I mean, we, we are, we're, we're very cognitive of the technology that's out there. We're very aware, especially, again, we're, we're kind of guys from the pharmaceutical industry that decided we needed to pay the light bill, so to speak. And, and so, you know, this is, this is an endeavor. Also, I'm looking forward to hopefully learning that this particular geography in terms of its altitude and is, is an ideal environment for a long term. So legalization, right, could open up a great can of worms, right? All the corn's grown up in Iowa. All the fruits and vegetables are grown in Florida and California. So, you know, maybe, maybe this could be a hotbed or maybe this is an ideal location. So you never know. This, there's a, things could turn very positive with legalization. And then at the same time, so our pharmaceutical endeavors are in Little Rock, Arkansas, and they happen to have, you know, they grow a lot of cotton over there. So where marijuana is ideally grown is going to be an interesting fallout from legalization. But ultimately, at the end of the day, the technology right now is, is gonna be, is gonna, it's, we're, our technology will be centered here.
All right. Thank you. Being that it's a public hearing, we'll ask if there's any public comment for or against this measure?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Les, just a quick procedural question. We're just, we're just looking for a motion and a second and a vote on this, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Hearing no public comment on the, or, yeah, for or against. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Appreciate it. Is there any need of the executive session? Hearing none. The hearing is closed. I will entertain a motion. So moved. The second? All right. And when you're ready, give them the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Congratulations, guys, and thank you for the interest in our town.
Oh, by the way, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just, Audrey has been invaluable in this process, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that and what you did. We'll, we'll move that. Thank you. Item 7B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 4 animals of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, to better align with PACFA rules, regulations, and to better manage animal functions. Hearing is open.
Hello. Could you, counsel? Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. As the manager of the City of Trinidad Animal Shelter, presenting two ordinances that were vital, that I brought to city council for the welfare of the animals and the sustainability of the shelter operations. First, the repeal and reenactment of Chapter 4 animals brings our code into alignment with the state law, specifically PACFA and Title 18 of the Colorado revised statutes. The changes modernized our approach to dangerous dogs, set reasonable pet ownership limits and establish accountability through licensing, microchipping, and progressive fees. And so then we also introduced the Fair Access Animal Permit System. So we were interested in changing the current free and free rule and extending that to six animals regardless of species of owned animal, provided that you pass the home inspection, that you can provide for the animal that you have fenced in your yard and you're able to care for it. So it basically is, the goal is to help outfit and cover the expenses that the shelter is having to go through. Those expenses increase on a yearly basis. And we haven't had an opportunity to address the fee schedule for the City of Trinidad in some time. So it was really just kind of years behind where we currently are. And so our last discussion, we talked about where we were at as a city. Mr. Williamson, you and I spoke to, about it in regards to kind of what it looks like for us per capita with our stray population. So I have that information for you. And so in 2024, the Trinidad Animal Shelter, and this is strays that were brought in. And we have to know that not all strays are brought to us. It's just what is found within the city limits and brought to us. So we took in 573 animals and of that, 306 were stray. That puts us at a 53% stray intake. What that constitutes as is that for a population of 8216, which is our last population status check for Trinidad, it's one stray animal per 27 residents. And so, and with the strays and the abandonment animals at our shelter, we had 24 in the year of 2023, or 2024, excuse me. So that constitutes one out of every 13 animals left at the shelter are intentionally abandoned there. So what that means for us is that we are at 30%, 30% of all strays are reclaimed by owners. So most of them are staying with us and they are breeds that we cannot necessarily move out very well. That puts a major constraint on the shelter. The reclaim rate remains at a low 30% despite increased efforts for us posting. And the shelter continues to see abandonment incidents almost on a weekly basis. At the shelter, we thankfully now have camera system in place, so we're able to try to maintain and monitor that a little bit better. But our, our intake volume remains disproportionately high for a city of our size. And so we're looking to just modernize and enforce the, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm a terrible public speaker, guys. I think you all are honestly speaking to this right now. So I'm always a nervous Nellie up here. So we're just looking for accountability. Help those who are great animal caregivers and who are responsible caregivers to their animals. Allow them the, the ability to, to have ownership of their property and their said animals and hold those who are habitual offenders a little more accountable.
Thank you. At this point, is there any questions from counsel? We'll start with Counselwoman Ogletree.
If I have any questions, I'm really grateful that you all worked so hard and putting this together in terms of rewarding and putting this all together. Just feel great.
I concur with Counselwoman Ogletree. Appreciate all the hard work and concerted effort you put into this, Pam. Appreciate it.
Counselman Chu?
Pretty much the same. Thank you for really doing a good job.
Counselwoman Trujillo?
Thank you, Pam. I really appreciate you putting this together and very well worded. You know, Nadra did a great job on this.
Thank you.
It's long overdue. Thank you.
Counselman Thurman?
Appreciate it, Pam. It's been a blast and thank you for doing all the, all the hard work. Also need a main call.
I'm still looking for you.
Just let me know.
Thank you very much to you and Audrey. It's a huge labor to do. Specifically, the work at the shelter, it's a, very much a labor of love, I would say. And we're fortunate to have you there and thank you for your effort on this. And hopefully, it yields what you're looking for and brings about help. I, I have no question. Being that it's a public hearing, we'll ask for any public comment for or against. Hearing none. We'll close the hearing. Thank you very much, Pam.
Thank you.
So we'll have item 7B, subpart 1, a second reading of an ordinance repealing and reacting, reenacting, reacting probably works a little. Chapter 4 animals of the Code of City of Trinidad, Colorado, to better align with PACFA rules and regulations to better manage animal functions. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Counselwoman Ogletree and Counselman Trujillo. Councilwoman Ogletree and Councilman Trujillo, we'll have a motion, the second. And when you're ready, vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item seven C, public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance amending Section ten five municipal court appointment, oath, salary, powers of the code of the city of Trinidad to adjust fines fees associated with dog and cat violations. I'll open the hearing. Les?
Mayor Proton, council members, this is, you know, this goes along with what you, you just did. This is not the schedule, and, and this is for your consideration. I know you've talked about this before. Any questions that you have or anything you want to, you want to talk about?
I have one. So the, the fine changes that we're enacting, we would be enacting tonight only apply to the animal violations. We're not changing anything else.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my.
Are there any further questions from council?
No questions, sir. No question.
I have no questions from the multiple work session we've had. Being that it's a public hearing, we'll entertain any comments for or against. Hearing none, the hearing is closed. Item seven C, subpart one, second reading of an ordinance amending Section ten dash five municipal court appointment, oath, salary, powers of the code of city Trinidad to adjust fines fees associated with dog and cat violations. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Councilman Trujillo?
Second.
And the vote, when you're ready, Kim.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item seven D, annexation Maverick North Annexage, subpart one, public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city. We'll open the hearing. Mr. Mason?
Evening, Mayor Proton, council. This is the last one for the annexation from Maverick, so please bear with me. I think you guys are probably getting a little tired. Same old, same old stuff. One more time. So Maverick submitted an exit petition to the district's office September, or February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, seeking annexation of eighteen point eight one acres located on the northern end of city limits, offense at eighteen. We had a concept review, March fourth. This annexation includes I twenty-five right of way, county road thirty-two point four right of way from I twenty-five to the county road seventy-one one intersection, including the intersection and that's a portion of seventy-one, county road seventy-one one in front of the project's frontage. There's three property owners in the annexation, Maverick, which is four point seven six acres, C dot thirteen point nine nine acres, and Lauren and Patricia McDonald, zero point zero six acres. Due to Cardy revised statute, C dot declines to be a signatory on annexation petitions. Mr. McDonald was not a signature on the annexation petition, but was required because he's minority owner, and he will be a signatory on the annexation and rezone plots. The annexation impact report was distributed to all required entities. There was no comment from any of these entities. City, Trinidad routinely annexed land as corporate limits to the city of Trinidad for development property. Maverick and city executed, execute a pre-annexation agreement in May twenty twenty-four. In this agreement, the city committed to serving the development with utilities, water, gas, and sewer. Let's see, Planning Zoning Variance Commission reviewed the annexation rezone, recommended approval with conditions on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. All requirements found in Section fourteen thirty-four of the Land Use Code have been met, including contingency. And as I said before, Maverick's being built, we've all seen it. They have building permit through Los Angeles County, site plan approvals through Los Angeles County. And then one, one other thing, staff will be recommendation, recommending adoption of an annexation agreement at the next city council meeting. Unfortunately, Maverick's legal team is still reviewing the annexation agreement. But right now, we'll continue to operate on a pre-annexation agreement until we get that finalized, hopefully in a couple of weeks. And then to go along with the, the next agenda item, the rezone, just to, you know, because I'm up here, I guess, the site is currently zoned ranch at Los Angeles County. They're requesting community commercial. This is consistent with surrounding property in the city limits and the use of gas stations approved use for community commercial. Been a good, good partner to work with on this, this petition, annexation petition so far, so. Any questions?
Any, any questions from council?
I do not have any. We've had all this time.
Hearing, hearing no questions from council. Is there anyone for or against to speak from the audience? Hearing none, the hearing is closed. Second reading of ordinance annexing certain territory to the city. Entertain a motion. So moved. And the second?
Second.
Shu and DeBono, when you're ready for the voting.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
D, annexation, item two, public hearing amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. The hearing is now open. Mr. Mason, I presume that you already spoke to this?
Yes.
I would ask, is there any questions from council?
No questions, sir.
Hearing no questions, I'll, we'll ask if there's any to speak for or against from citizens. Hearing none, the hearing is closed. D, part two, subpart A, second reading of ordinance amending zone map by establishing zone classification of certain land annexed into the corporate limits of the city of Trinidad. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Ogletree and Trujillo, and then when you're ready for the voting.
We just had a council person leave.
We'll hold the vote. Councilman Thurman, we're proceeding to vote on D, subpart two, item A, second reading of ordinance amending zone map. When you're ready, Kim.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
E, public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance vacating a sixty-foot strip of Moore's Canyon Road within parcels B and H of the Country Club Ranch filing to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Hearing is open.
So this is for, this, the applicant for this vacate. This has to happen before the applicant presents a major impact application, that's actually further down the agenda. That's for subdivision and rezone, but it's just a cadence issue to get this completed prior, so it'd be completed a day. That way, when the subdivision rezone are completed, hopefully next meeting, everything worked out right for that. And this is for Moore's Canyon. Remember, right, the plaid, the way it's plaid isn't the way it's actually as built. So the applicant's assisting us, assisting us by plating, replating it. Yeah, the, yeah, the applicant's assisting the city with plating as built existing alignment of Moore's Canyon. And in return, the city is deading the previously plaid right of way back to the applicant, back, back to the applicant. And this just allows them to plot their, sort of their northern border of their subdivision that's coming up.
In effect, we're just making the dirt match the paper.
That's correct. Yes, and as that is before, so. Little bit, yeah, little bit. And then I would just like to say that this was not cause of this applicant, so this is a previous error twenty years ago, so try to correct it before we keep moving.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any, any questions from council? Sorry, Councilman Thurman?
No questions. We've been through this a couple of times and stopped the plan.
Mr. Trujillo?
I agree, I don't have any questions. Just, just clarification on this again. The one that goes, that's weird because I can't see it, but where it's scooped down, that's going to be the new one, or?
No, that's where it was previously platted.
Okay. We need to go the other direction.
Yeah. That's, that's the Aztec, but northern ones, the Aztec ones.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Chu?
No, no questions, thank you.
Councilman DeBono?
No, sir.
Councilman Ogletree?
Mr. Mason, so plating it will result to end this land being dedicated to the city, right? The land that is actually?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that would give them the, the rights dedicated to us. Absolutely. Yeah, they got to dedicate it beforehand.
I, I have no further questions. We'll ask if there's any comments for or against it from any citizen present. Hearing none. The hearing is closed. I have lost my place. I think I found it. Second reading of an ordinance vacating sixty-foot strip of Moore's Canyon Road within parcels B and H of County Road Club Ranch filing to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Councilman Trujillo? The second?
Second.
Councilman Shu? When you're ready for the voting.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item F, public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter thirteen Parks and Recreation to the Trinidad Municipal Code by adding a new Section thirteen dash four concerning regulation of certain commercial recreational activities and work in and on the Purgatory River corridor, and amending and rem numbering the penalty clause for violations. I will, before opening the hearing, I'll just entertain any motions that want to be entered, just based on the discussions that have existed on this.
And if I could, please, Mr. Mayor Proton, what staff is recommending is that you open the hearing on this and then continue it and, and postpone the, the hearing.
Would we need to open it for the?
Yes. Okay, there, there are a number of reasons why we would ask for that. I won't go into that.
That's, that's fine.
But that is a request, and I think that is largely in compliance with what people have been asking of you, but as, as it says in the recommended city council action.
I was just going to do it in lieu of opening, but we'll, we'll open the hearing.
I understand, I understand.
All right, the hearing, the hearing is now open, so we may entertain a motion at this point?
Yes, and I would ask that you please consider postponing this until the May twentieth meeting. I believe Councilman Ogletree may have a question.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we open, we've opened the public hearing, if we move to continue it, will the public hearing happen at the May twentieth meeting? Will the continued public hearing happen at that point?
That is, yes, that is the anticipated course of action. Yes, ma'am.
Then I would move to continue, postpone this matter until the May twentieth, table it and postpone it to the May twentieth meeting for, to consider at that time.
I will second that.
Hearing and a motion by Councilman Ogletree and a second by Councilman Trujillo. We will ask for a vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Yes. I need to close the hearing?
It's been postponed, understood, postponed.
Item G, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance for the consideration of a vacation of right of way portion Ali A and for the acceptance of the dedication of that land for part of Lot five, Block one hundred and fourteen of the original town site of city of Trinidad, Colorado, eight one zero eight two. Hearing is now open. You're a busy person tonight.
So this is a vacate, dedicate for portion of Ali A, submitted by Mount Carmel Health Wellness Community Center. It's been a collaborative effort. Collaborative effort between the applicant and the city. City has a planned, I think we're going to talk about it a little bit later, project for the unvacated portion of the alley, and this vacate, dedicate is necessary for the city to continue their access. The proposed vacate alleyway is not currently being used by the public. It's approved as a parking lot, so it's addition to the Champion's Building parking lot, or the building, or the parking lot behind the Champion's Building. And then the vacate, the dedicated portion of the plot will serve as access, actually it serves as the access, access into the parking lot and actually gives connectivity to the unvacated portion of Ali A. The proposed vacate right of way is twelve hundred thirty-three square feet, and the entire dedicated is sixteen hundred seventy-one square feet. All vacant review criteria has been met, planning commission made a recommendation of approval on, at the April eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Like I said, it's been a pretty collaborative effort between the city and the applicant. They, they get better use of their parking lot, we get better access to our own alley, so it's a very win-win situation. That's all I got.
Any questions? We'll start with Councilwoman Ogletree.
Okay, reading the, the document that, I guess, I guess it's a staff report that you all provided, excuse me, under review standards number two, it says that necessary the right of way will be replaced. What does that mean?
That, that's just something that in our code, if you, if you apply for a vacate, you kind of have to say, if for some reason the city asks you to go back, you, you will, basically. So it's just, it's just part of the, the process when you're asking for a vacate.
Okay. So we have Ali A, and it's being worked on right now, but up until recently, people have been able to walk down Ali A and then through the parking lot out to the street that runs in front of the church. Is that still going to be the case? Is there still going to be public access?
Yes, so instead of walking straight, the hard part, Ali A jogs a little bit, and actually you'd have to be walking through the parking lot itself. This would give us access, you'd be walking, you'd have to turn towards convent. So instead of walking straight, you'd turn and go to convent, and you could go back down towards Church Street.
Are they going to close off that, that entrance to the parking lot then that's on the convent? Or is that convent?
During construction, yes, but no, long-term, no. It's going to be open to the public. And actually, this is going to allow the trash trucks and stuff to get in that go, have to go in there, and, and people to get in there legally, because currently it's a private parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're actually giving people public access instead of, of walking across the private parking lot.
Okay.
Councilman Chu? What if Vela Lumen wanted to put tables and chairs there? Is that a compliance issue?
So we, the portions being dedicated is kind of the, the accessway itself.
Not necessarily.
Not, the sidewalk, it kind of gets funky, but the sidewalk is actually behind, behind Vela Luna there. It's currently, the, yeah, it's, it's going to be redone as well, but that's actually private. They, they own that. SCRT owns their portion behind their building, same with that Tally's. So they kind of extend like right to the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it is.
No questions? Uh, no questions.
I got a weird question. Is that, what's going to happen with that tree that is in the middle of that walkway when you come into the parking lot?
It, it's a private parking lot, so I think, I don't think Tim Lamb and, and has any plans to, to mess with it, yeah.
I was just asking, because it's just.
I, I, I know they really like having a pleasing aesthetic in their parking lot. They've actually done some upgrades. They have a, on their, on Church Street, they've done a little bit, so they, they want it to be a pleasing, and I think that was kind of when you're walking outside the church, they want a nice pleasing view, not, again, backside of a bunch of buildings kind of, so they don't, they, they, they do a good job with that.
Just asking, I didn't, it was just in my mind.
No, I didn't, no.
Weird constructions set up going into the parking lot.
A lot of times, trades in effect have some, some form of lopsidedness, but to, to your point, this actually is a benefit to both.
Yes, yeah.
Both parties, and fairly demonstrated, so, so thank you for the presentation. I have no questions. That being said, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing. Okay. So part one, second reading of an ordinance for consideration of vacation right-of-way portion Ali A for the acceptance of dedication of land for part Lot five, Block one hundred and fourteen of the original townsite of Trinidad, Colorado, eight, ten, eighty-two. Is there a motion?
No.
And a second, Councilman Chu and Councilman Trejo, when you're ready for the vote, Kim?
Devon?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trejo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes, all right. Item H, public hearing for the consideration of ordinance amending the zone classification of a parcel of land containing one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres located in Section twenty-five, township thirty-three, south, range sixty-four, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, City of Trinidad, County of Los Anamos, State of Colorado, from the planned unit development, PUD, to residential estate, RE, medium density residential, or MDR, high-density residential, HDR, community commercial, CC, and open O. At this point, we'll open the hearing. And our presentation we have?
Busy. Looking at chairs, sit there.
So I think on this one, I'll kind of present H and I together because they're very much the same applicant, two different actions, but so that way it's probably better described. So the entire project area will be going through a rezoning process. That's one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres. The project that is being proposed is going to be done in phases. So lots one through four along Morris Canyon Road, that's four point three nine acres. They will be the first phase, and that zoning is going to be residential estate. And it'll be known as the Estates at Rancho Duran. The second phase is going to have some zoning that's a little bit, that has several uses. This will be, it will be high, or community commercial on Santa Fe Trail, high-density behind that, medium-density, and then some residential state behind that as well. And then that's kind of the rezone part of it. So the development itself, like I said, phases, so there's Phase one, which is lots one through four. And then Phase two, which is lots five through nine, are not receiving land use approvals with this application. And the only request for Phase two is that rezone I just talked about. For, oh, and for Phase two, anything, any other development will be coming back to council for, with a major application. The city's approved final engineering drawings for city utility extensions. This includes water, gas, power. These four lots will be done on septic. This was just because, one, they're outside the four hundred-foot sewer service area. The topography to install the sewer would, sewer main and lift station would be pretty detrimental to actually being able to do it. And the city doesn't want to take on the long-term maintenance of a sewer main lift station for that far, versus four houses. So that way, so with that, the lots one through four, we permitted engineered ISDS septic systems. These maintenance and installation will be, of these septic systems will be at the cost of the future homeowners. And then that's approved through Los Anamos County Health Department. I have talked to Rowan Sykes over there. She's well aware of the application. Also in this Phase one, there are two tracks that are proposed for open space for future trail connections. And then, oh, we talked about the vacated portion earlier. And then later in this meeting, there'll be a subdivision improvement agreement. This is for the engineered cost estimate that I just mentioned on the engineering plans for extending sewer, or extending gas, water, and power. Yeah, Planning Commission's ready for approval on major subdivision and rezone April eighth, twenty twenty-five. I think that's all I have. The applicant is here. As well as I think I might put in online for any questions.
Nick, I'd like to add that right now, we have two dates noticed for public hearing. They're different, so the subdivision date, we would ask that when you entertain a motion for setting the public hearing for the major impact subdivision, we'd also set it for June third, so the applicant doesn't have to, and you don't have to listen, and Nick and I twice on this application, replay everything twice. But yeah, so item I there, right now says setting the second hearing date as May twentieth. We would ask for that to also be June third with the zoning.
Any other questions or if you have the applicant present?
It was a council pleasure to hear the applicant's presentation. Do you have questions?
I have a question. Where, I was trying to follow that. I understand that community commercial is one of the zones that is going to be proposed to be changed. But do we have a footprint for that yet?
Yeah, I don't know. Can you pull up? He has a slide spread. I think Michael has it, so can you share?
If I could share a screen, I could show the.
I have to make him look.
Post, post tools? Can they allow it? Does it find every time? Check my. I don't touch your screen. It doesn't like me.
Did it work?
Thank you. Of course. So what was the, yeah, what was the question on, I couldn't hear the first part of that question?
Where's the commercial, community commercial zoning? So it's right here in Lot nine. And this is Santa Fe Trail. So they have, because the zoning was previously PUD, that's found obsolete, they have to rezone not only just this section that they're looking to develop now in this Phase one, they have to rezone the entire property. So with that, they do a residential state here along Morris Canyon, back here in Lot six, which kind of wraps around, medium-density in Lot seven, high-density in Lot eight, and then community commercial here in Lot nine against Santa Fe Trail.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any further questions from the public? None. I just wanted a clarification of the date, the date difference that Michael was speaking about. Was that in item one? So between June third and May twentieth, he'd like those moved to the same, is that?
Yes, on the, item agenda seven I, we have May twentieth, but if we could instead do June third, like the rezone, just for the publication. That way they're both being approved at the same time.
Sorry, that was my earlier zone out there. So they'll both be moved to June third?
That's correct.
The only question or comment that I had was, I just wanted to thank the applicant for the attention to detail of open space and, you know, we talked about it, preservation of existing topography that's nice, so thank you for that attention. So that being said, is there any people here from the public to speak for or against? Hearing none, the hearing will be moving on. In one first reading, ordinance amending zone classification of a parcel of land containing one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres located in Section twenty-five, township thirty-three, south, range sixty-four, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian of Trinidad, County of Los Anamos, State of Colorado, from the planned unit development to residential estate, medium-density residential, high-density residential, community commercial, and open, and setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on June third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Is there, oh, we need an introduction? Someone introduce? Councilman Ogletree? Motion?
So move.
Councilman Chu, second?
Second.
Councilman Thurman? When you're ready, knock him for the vote.
Devon?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trejo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Moving right along here. All right. Continuation of seven public hearings. Subpart one, major impact application for a major subdivision known as Estates Rancho Duran, filing one and setting a hearing date on June third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Is there a motion?
So move.
Oh, it's a hearing, I'm sorry.
It's a hearing?
I'll open, I'm sorry, thank you. I'll open the hearing. It's basically a continuation?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, we could have the applicant speak. This is the actual major subdivision.
I didn't know if he wanted to talk when he asked if it was a motion or not.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, this is the actual subdivision, so yeah, the applicant can present, but yeah, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman Chu. If the applicant wishes to present, we certainly be inclined to hear any input that you have.
I mean, I'm inclined to kind of your guidance. If you guys want to hear, if you've heard it enough, certainly I can go back and sit down. But my name is John Olson. I'm with Urban Landscapes. I'm the planner for the project. With me tonight, we have Brett and Jason with Duran Ventures as the developer. So do you have a presentation? But again, it's a long meeting. I don't want to take up too much more time, so.
I mean, we've had a work session and the joint session on this. Has there been any major concept changes since those presentations?
No, no, it's, we're still looking at the same thing. Basically taking the obsolete PUD, trying to formulate it into a lot of different zone classifications, hence your question, lots of different typologies of uses that we want to have over this acreage. So in the end, the goal is to have kind of a cohesive neighborhood with a lot of different price points, et cetera, and walkability is a big component, not only to the school, but to potential community commercial pieces and things like that.
Thank you. With that, is there any questions from council?
No, sir.
Thank you so much for your involvement in this, and we look forward to seeing the end product of this.
No, thank you, and I should all see you again.
All right, with that, is there any public comment for or against tonight? Hearing none, the hearing is closed. So looking for a motion on major impact application for a major subdivision known as Estates Rancho Duran, filing one, and setting a second hearing date for June third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M.
So moved.
Second?
That's Councilman Ogletree and Councilman Trejo. When you're ready, Kim, the vote?
Devon?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trejo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item eight, unfinished business, which we just finished. Item nine, miscellaneous business, part eight, consideration of an award of bid to Trinidad Construction for the Ali A Breeze Way Project number zero seven dash twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. I presume you're here to present.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, council. We had, we had four bids on the project. The morning after we opened it, one of the low bidder made tour construction. We drew their bid and gave us a written request to withdraw it. They came in, in tour was the low bid at three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars and thirty cents. Upon, I guess sleeping on it over the night, he decided he wanted to withdraw his bid. So he gave us a written request to withdraw, withdraw, excuse me, withdraw a bid. With that, we went to the second lowest bidder, which was Trinidad Construction Group, and they were four hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. So basically, we allocated four hundred thousand for this project. So we're around approximately, rough numbers, sixteen thousand over budget. The next project that I present to you is under budget. So I talked to Cheryl today, and she said that the offset of the two projects will still, will be under. So any questions?
If there's any questions, we'll start with Councilman Ogletree.
What is Araco one and two? What is that part of this?
Araco, they're a, they're a concrete company. They do utilities as well. But their bids were rejected because they only bid certain items of the, they only bid the concrete portions. There were sixty-one line items, and they only bid, like I said, just the concrete. So it wasn't, we did, it was an unacceptable bid because they did not bid the other items. They're actually a subcontractor working out for Maverick, and they did work up on First Street as well. Very good at what they do, but I guess they didn't understand the process to bid the whole project.
Councilman Devon? Bobby, are you satisfied with Trinidad Construction Group and with prior experience with other projects in the past?
We are. Yeah, they, we checked their numbers. They were real close to what engineer estimate was, so. So I think they'll do us a good job.
Okay. What's their schedule? Because they have a lot of other stuff going on. Did he keep getting this done right away?
He told me, I talked to Carl today, he said that they, I think the block for the block wall might be six, eight weeks out, but there's a lot of demolition. They take out the those big concrete planters, back porch footers. So by the time all that is done, everything should work out there. He told me they're ready to go as soon as we give them the warrant. So as you know, if you guys select them tonight, we can give them the warrant tomorrow, and then have approximately ten days, and then we give them notice to proceed. That's a hundred day, hundred eighty-day construction period.
Are we sticking to the hundred eighty days?
That's what's in the, that's what's in the documents, so, yes, sir.
Because a lot of times we do that, they always extend and stuff, so.
Well.
Do we have a penalty or anything?
There is liquidated damage of seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. And keep in mind, we're dealing with an alley that's got a hundred twenty-five-year-old infrastructure. We don't know if there's going to be any change orders, but most likely are. Can't stand up here and tell you there's not. But we deal with it when we approach and, you know, whatever we uncover. Gas department is currently in there. They are replacing a steel line with poly. So we already found a steam line. It was abandoned. So they'll have their line probably completed before we get the notice to proceed to Trinidad Construction.
Councilman Trejo?
I'd just like to mirror Councilman Devon and Councilman Chu's questions. I just have, I have a few concerns just from the past history. And I'm just, I'm hoping that we have some fail safes really put in line this time. Because that is, it's not like it's over at Central Park, you know, where it's not affecting the public as much. This is the right downtown, so I just want to make sure that we have some fail safes out there.
We're going to proceed a little different with this project. We have weekly meetings on Central Park, at the park. We're going to have those here. And we have the ability to record them. Just the daughter I's cross her T's. So I talked to Carl, and we're aware of what, you know. of what, you know, dies on the project and what's going to go on with it, so. I think, I think Central Park was a kind of a, an entry or a learning project for them, and they're, I think they're well aware of what they're getting into, into this project. They have the right subs, Mr. Duran, who's a long-known mason in town, is going to be doing the masonry work on the project, they told us that they would sub the concrete work, they have not said who, but, so we feel confident that project is primarily, and there's quite a bit welding on it, too.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate that, thank you.
You bet.
Just, no, no pressure, just, just don't mess it up. It's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a lot of eyes on you, considering it's in the middle of town, right?
That is correct.
So, you know, you know, you know what to do, right?
I think it's going to be a nice project when it's all said and done.
Right, I appreciate you, I appreciate that. You guys taking this challenge on.
I'm going to disagree with Councilman Thurman. He meant it facetiously, I, I think it's an incredible amount of pressure on, on you and the contractor. So a hundred and eighty days from today is November second, I didn't figure that out by myself, I asked Kuba, but the, there's a notice period, so actually that's going to extend it to November, what?
Like I said, if we get approval tonight, we give a notice of warrant tomorrow, then generally it's ten days where we have the notice to proceed, so ten additional days, so that's where the clock starts.
November twelfth, and?
Plus or minus.
Okay, when you say plus or minus, is that contractually plus or minus, or?
No, no, that's, I'm just saying that's approximately what the notice proceeding date is.
So that's, that's my question, is that the actual, is it expected to take that full period of time to November twelfth?
You know, we try to estimate the time, they might get in there and get it done sooner. It just depends, they have weather days, there's, there's a lot of, I mean, this week,
yeah.
gas is basically out of there because they're, it's a mud pit right now.
Right.
They, they started last week excavation, and yesterday they couldn't do nothing, today they couldn't do nothing, so it just really depends what Mother Nature throws at us and...
Right, so what, what other subdrain utilities besides gas are you dealing with?
Uh, we're going to run a water line, it's just a water service, it's going to be a frost-free hose bid, we anticipate since it is a communal dining, people are going to spill stuff, and it'd be nice to have a hose bid to wash things down. We're going to have power, so if somebody wants to have an event, we're going to have a couple, you know, duplex outlets, not a whole lot of power, but we'll, we'll have some power, and then obviously, we're going to do the stream lighting across the top of it to light it, kind of the theme that we've got going on at the art space, and right adjacent to Balloon, they got stream lighting going on there as well, that canopy.
And then, how, uh, how are added days established, what are the always added days are established, and how are they established, is that mutually between city staff and the contractor, if you wouldn't mind talking to that just a little bit?
You bet, so we, days are added to a project is if there's a change order, and then basically it's negotiated, you know, if something turns out that we need to add to the project, we have an estimate, we, we confirm it with the contractor, and when we sign the change order, then the days are added under that to the total count.
And then weather days are, are separate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they just have to ask for those.
So as far as the change orders, I mean, it's my understanding that some contracts are written with broad enough scope that would exclude some change orders, in your opinion, is our contract broad enough to protect us from at least minor change orders? Is it going to have pretty major work to incur change orders?
I, I think Mr. Eaton has done a phenomenal job on the set of plans. I personally checked it twice, but that doesn't mean that something could slip through the, the cracks, so I, I don't anticipate many, but like I said, we're, we're dealing with a hundred and twenty-five-year-old infrastructure, we're going in there completely, you know, we don't know what we're, we've already found, uncovered some, gas departments have covered a couple of things, you know, we didn't anticipate, so, but the good thing is, is we already got that portion uncovered, and, but, other than that, I think, Mr., like I said, Mr. Eaton has covered everything, there's sixty-one items in this, in this bid tab, so I mean, he's kind of dotted his i's, crossed his t's, so, but like I said, that's construction, there's no guarantee of no change orders.
Okay.
But we're going to do our best, I mean, I, I think it's a great set of plans.
Okay.
And not because it works for me, it, I, I really do, I, I don't know if you guys have seen it, but we have a really nice entrance feature sign that's going in, there's basically masonry piers with a big steel sign on up the Alley A Breeze Way.
I've, I've said this before up here, the, the best day to find a tree is forty years ago, and the next best day is today. Obviously, it would be nice to have, had we had Alley A ready for, for the Rad Fest and whatever other major events happened down there. I was hoping, it, it might be too grand an idea, but at least to, maybe at the entrance of that alleyway, to present some sort of, you know, public-presented information that would show at least a light conceptual rendering of what it will look like in years coming to, to hopefully cause people interest to come back.
We could probably do that, absolutely.
Anyway, that was a lot of questions.
Like on a poster board, like when they do a construction project, they post, yeah, they post it on the, on the fence outside the project, yeah, we could do something.
Um, anyway, that's, that's all of my questions, any further questions from council? Just out of curiosity, what was the next lowest bid?
Well, the lowest bid, like I said, was...
Oh, I know it was Mid-Tor, but the one?
That was the lowest, then.
The next, the next two.
Oh, the next one above, it was five hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, was a contractor out of, of Pueblo Cedar Ridge. They're probably, we tried to justify that number, they're traveling from Pueblo straight back and forth with their bid, so the two, the two lowest bids were local.
Good. All right, well, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
And with, with that, we'll entertain a motion for item A.
So moved.
Councilman Ogletree, second?
Second.
Councilman Trillo, when you're ready, Kim, the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item B, consideration of qualifications and proposal submitted by Hellis Construction Incorporated for the Trinidad Pickleball Courts project number zero two dash twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Mr. Justice?
Uh, we received four bids on the, on the pickleball courts, it was, this was a little different, it was a, basically a, a request for proposal and qualifications, we did ask for a, a bid schedule, so we had an idea what the price is going to be. Hellis ended up being the, the firm that we chose, they were the, actually the lowest bid price, but we thought was the best contractor as well. They originally come in and they were going to do a lighting system out there, and it was about two hundred thousand dollars to put in lights, so that put us over our, it put us in about six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, we had earmarked five hundred thousand for the pickleball courts, so we talked to them about, maybe we could get all the infrastructure for the lighting, conduits, the piers, and then maybe down the road, a power light that could come in and set the lights and save us some money, at least all, everything would be in place just to set the power poles, so they basically did about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deduction, and that brought us down to that four sixty-seven thousand number. As you know, we're budgeted for five hundred thousand on that project, so we are under on this one, so like I said earlier, when we were a little bit over on the Alley A, that's how Cheryl justified the number, and I asked her to go there, just to give you guys a heads up. Hellis does a lot of these, they had a very thorough, Mike reviewed it, you know, all of our staff did, and we thought it was a very good proposal that they did. It's, it is a post-technician slab versus a siloing grade, so, anyway, and they're, they're following the geotechnical report, it came back, they said they had fill, if you remember that, it was like Sam Poehn's junkyard, they had about six feet of fill in it, the geotech came back and told me we could probably get away with doing two feet of over X and compact the bottom third foot versus, you know, it would probably give us a pretty good foundation, but with the price that Hellis gave us to do the full six-foot of over excavation, it was a no-brainer, it was only like seven thousand dollars to go completely down to guarantee that the slab doesn't move and whatnot, so we feel real confident in the, in the soil department and the work that Hellis is going to do to construct this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Justice, is there any questions, we'll start on this side?
No questions. The specs are down to regulation, right, so in case there's wanting, they're wanting tournaments or anything there, it is regulatory?
Absolutely, six courts.
Can we decide to go, it looks like we've decided to go with the tennis court surfacing other than a tile?
That is correct.
Okay, so concrete and tennis surfacing, all right, sir?
I think there's a tenure warranty on that, the acrylic surface.
Oh, wow. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
No questions? No, sir.
And an eight-inch, I'm sorry, and a eight, eight-foot fence around it, and then four-foot fences between the courts, is that it?
That is correct, that's what we, correct.
Okay, I was just going to say, how old are you?
Is, is pickleball still a thing?
It's so peaceful, it's huge.
To your knowledge, Bob, has, has anybody from the pickleball community seen the plan, looked at the plan, have you gotten any feedback at all? I mean...
I, not that I know of, though.
It's, it's purely, I was, I was curious, I mean, being that, to Councilman Trillo's point, they are regulation, it, it should do well, six, six courts, we are advised is, is sort of helpful to have a tournament on, so I think it'll be a really nice addition for the city, what, when is the completion expected for this one? I, you may have said I may have missed it.
I, I did not, it, so basically, we have to reach back out to Hellis and let them know that they, you know, that they're, they're awarded bidder, and I, you remember in the report, Mike, what they said for completion plan?
For over days, I do not, Bob, I'm sorry.
I, I want to say it's, it's right, it's right near the same as the Alley A, around a hundred and eighty days, you know?
Okay.
I mean, you think about it, it's quite a bit of work, you got six-feet material, the good thing is that, that soil that they dig up can be reused, they can recompact it, they don't have to haul it off and bring yet other.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
So it has to be reworked.
All right, I mean, and we can get a project up, be as they expect in completion in the near future, then? All right, I have no further questions, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for item B.
So moved.
Councilman Trillo, second?
Second.
Councilman Ogletree, and the vote when you're ready, Kim?
DeBono?
Yes.
Chu?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Consideration for a bid for the combination sewer cleaner factor twenty-one hundred I jet map, or sewer department, from Joe Johnson Equipment L L C in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seventy-four dollars and zero cents.
Thanks for the Mayor Protan council members, fun to be on this side. Hey, I want to introduce Lawrence S. Stephen, I, I'm sure you all know him or have seen him around, he's worked for the sewer department for a long time, when, when Jacobs took over, Lawrence was selected by them to keep him on board, and I'd proudly like to say he's now the project manager for Jacobs on our sewer operation, so, just wanted to introduce him, and he'll probably be on the agenda, we've already talked with Tara, he's got his yearly report, it's pretty outstanding, but that'll be coming up, but I bring him up here because in conjunction with the Jacobs team who operate and manage our sewer system, we solicit quotes and receive quotes from Sourcewell suppliers, they've already vetted, been through the process, Sourcewell, if you know, is kind of like a state award companies, and we had two companies that provided quotes, Joe Johnson Equipment provided the Vector twenty-one hundred I, and Ferris Machinery gave us street quotes on a demo unit that they had, that was full warranty, everything, they would honor the full warranty, one in-stock unit that they had, and then if we wanted to order a brand-new unit, they gave us all those quotes. Lawrence and the team got demos on these machines, they, they looked at the Vector twenty-one hundred I here recently, and it's our recommendation that we go with the low bid, low quote from Joe Johnson Equipment L L C of five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seventy-four dollars. And that, Will, any questions? He's, he's the man on the, on the ground, knows all the operations, but yeah.
Councilman Ogletree, you have any questions?
It's a shiny one? No, seriously, I, I'm, I think it's a good price, and, and the other machinery I have, we've been using for in excess of a year, and it's time to replace it, so.
Correct. I find me either jet, I didn't mention this, but this was built into Water Works, so these funds are within the department, yeah. Sorry, sorry for...
Congratulations, Lawrence, and you do feel confident with the jet, uh, back?
Yes, we have the back here right now that we use, same brand, that's been since two thousand and four, so, we haven't passed its life expectancy yet, we've already had a new engine put in, and it cost us four months of downtime cleaning lines, so it's pretty much, yeah, and we'll all pass it down to the street bridge, so they can use it first, or do any cleaning, stuff like that.
Thank you. No questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Trillo?
How many golden balls can I pick up?
Actually, pretty strong, it's, the first unit they had was a sixteen-inch lower than a bigger one.
Oh, that's awesome.
And so now this one will actually pick up the manhole lids.
Oh, oh, gee.
Breaks out of the, bricks out of the manholes, the old bricks, and you're going to do, it, it'll be pretty strong.
Yeah, this could be, this could be awesome, I think it's great, thank you so much.
Real quick, to empty this machine, is it automated, or does it take man hands on to get it?
It has both, we have automation, you can actually, this one here will actually have a remote unit that we can use while we're standing inside and looking at it, we can actually use the remote to use it, and it's all new, updated system where it's, it will give us actual real footage that we clean, instead of, we used to have, on the old one had a wheel that would count it, but that wheel was sometimes not accurate, this one will give us automatic, your digital readout, exact footage that we clean, because we are contracted, so much footage a year, and this will keep us accurate.
Troy, exactly, when you dump it?
Oh, we dump, we dump it down at the plant, we have a pad, and we're cleaning the site lines out.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Sorry, and it's, it's all electronic, and, so I mean, I...
Congratulations on your promotion, that's, that's great. So included in, what's, what's included with this purchase, is it any maintenance P M's for the first period of time, what sort of...
There's so much, I know the engine is warranted for so many years, and the rotor, there's a rotor pump on it, it's called, they're, they're, warranty on there, there's a big process that he has to... There's a bit of process that he has to, does a warranty again.
It's typical of this type of equipment, is the limited warranty, the tenure against metal, water tank leakage, do the corrosion, non-metrical water tanks, all that. Series impact and goes for only, this is the 2100 series, it has a five-year against, actually, we got the tenure, I'm sorry. Two-year on electrical electronics, and then it has exclusive remedy language for stuff like this, but the Vector is the company that we had previously, and they were good to work with. They are actually looking at opening an office in Springs or Queblos?
In Queblos.
Queblos, so that's closer. It's specialized equipment, I don't know if that answered your question?
It does, I just asked, and obviously, my place of work, we have similar equipment, not this complex, but the maintenance is extreme on these vehicles, so I just, I wanted to ask. But I have no, no further questions, so with that, we'll entertain waiting for Mr. Thurman.
Sorry, guys.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on item C.
So moved.
Councilwoman Ogletree, second.
Second.
Councilman DeBono, when you're ready, Kim, the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You would notify him, and we'll be getting an award letter to Mr. Justice if you can have the council approve.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I did want to say, just, well, you're good, I did want to say, just for the record, make it very plain seated, Mr. Valentine, you did say that this is already in the Waterworth projection, so there's no future...
That is correct, it has been budgeted in this year's slide item, we're guaranteed from the supplier that we will receive this year, the truck itself, so, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
Item D, resolution setting forth municipal fees, are you presenting that, Mr. Valentine?
I will, and if there's questions, I mean, ask for help from Audrey, who helped put this together, and any department heads that are here, if you recall, I, you, did you read the, the item? I'm sorry.
The resolution setting up municipal fees?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
No, no problem.
So, if you recall, we had a work session on this, and there was a pretty good discussion with council, staff took all those ideas and discussion items into account, and put together the resolution with all the fees as laid out, and I would entertain a motion, I mean, any questions? Come on the...
We could try, we could try.
He's not...
I'm glad, yeah, anyway, there's a lot of items, this provides the staff and council a means for all these to be in one resolution, so that if there's any changes, it doesn't require a whole ordinance review, like, it's a resolution where you can go through and adjust, so...
That being said, is there any questions from council, starting from Councilwoman Ogletree?
So, is there any kind of percentage increase that you went with, or was it a specific into a department?
Each department kind of looked at it, and we tried to look at the cost that the city incurs, we don't wanna, it's a fee, it's not a tax, we don't wanna violate table rules, so every, every department looked at each item and each charge to make sure that it's within, you know, the staff time that we use to do these certain things, so it's not across the board percentage, you know. The animal ordinance that you just passed has these fees in there, the same thing, you know, yeah.
Councilman DeBono?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't have any, wait, wait, more, more for...
I'm just, I'm just curious, because I do remember, we had asked, we were told on the river construction work permits, that those were to be determined by council on some of these things, and there's now a dollar amount in there. I was kind of curious on that, and the other question I had was, can we, can we put those in there without having an actual permitting process yet?
It's a resolution that'd be in there, but there's no trigger to...
To use them?
Do this fee, so when it, when we get a river, if we get a river, it'll be in here.
It's just...
What we did was, let's see, I'm looking for that, sorry. The outfitter is $50 a year, and then the river construction permit, it could vary depending on what they're gonna do and what staff time we have to do to review whatever they're requesting to build, to construct, to, you know, so there's a lot of staff time, so we put a fee in there of $25 an hour for actual staff time review, with a maximum of $500 to cap it out.
Okay, so that one kind of coincides with our building permits, I think, right?
Somewhat, yes.
Okay, that's my other question, I still had it, I was still curious, because we didn't really clarify, like, there was a question that was brought up, like, we have a duck race every year, are they gonna be required to have to pay this for their once a year, is that still considered in there?
It's not, absolutely, for that, it's for commercial activity, so if a nonprofit is coming in, we would want them to notify the city that, hey, we're gonna be in the river, we're gonna be doing this, I think there's, yeah.
Okay, just for clarification, I appreciate that, sir, thank you so much.
Yep.
No questions. Procedural question, potentially for you or less, is it possible that we, if council's consensus is to remove the river construction work permit and river construction outfitter and replace that with a TBD, is that, is that possible to have that discussion, find consent, and move forward that way?
I think you can, I mean, it's a resolution, as Mike mentioned.
Right.
Right, so, so there's no ordinance level of concern.
But we could do that this evening, though?
You could.
Okay, and then, I did just want to reiterate that, you know, obviously, these items are undertaken with the best cause and intent going forward for the whole city of Trejo that I E, if you're doing something for someone, you don't want to incur those charges to the rest of the city, so it does make sense to collect for the cost, but, you know, we can always make the best plans, and sometimes you run into unintended consequences, but I just want to reiterate this as fashion in a way that if we do run into those unintended consequences, we can pretty quickly mobilize and change, and I think that's important to, to mention. I, is there any...
Capitaine, go ahead.
I have just a little other question that I want to ask about space to create, some feedback that I've been hearing is that people get frustrated because they rent the space for a period of time, and then they have to include in that amount of time that they're renting, the amount of time that they have to do to clean it up, and so I think their thinking is, we're paying for the use of the space, but we don't want to pay extra money while we're cleaning up the space, and I don't know if this is the way that this is worded, but it seems like a fair, a fair concern on their part.
So, yeah, there is city staff time, if they wanna, you know, set up during the day before or something, and our staff is actually there, we don't, we don't charge for that, but if they, you know, wanna come in later on, and we have to actually bring staff in overtime or something like that, that's, we have to cover our costs. I, I know that there's been questions and concerns, but I think, for the most part, we, we work there, and the staff is there, but if it, if they ask for four hours and it's the afternoon, and then they're gonna spend cleanup from five to seven, we've gotta pay staff, so...
I just think it's something that probably needs some flexibility, because if people come in and they clean it right away, but they're past the time that they rented, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to rent, to charge them more for doing cleanup themselves.
Right, and I think that's, you know, I mean, I know that comparable venues, we don't have many, they, they charge you for the time, and I, I'm looking for that section, I apologize. I know that we spoke with Marty and Veronica, and they're working with everybody they can on how that, that lays out, and, I'm looking for it. So, it's different areas, like, for, let's just say the garage area for a private event, by the way, all of these were added nonprofits, are half-price, at half the fee, so $400 for half a day, four hours or less, $800 for a full day, four plus hours per day, and the $200 deposit, so I, I know that we have staff that, you know, we have to pay to be there, so I'm, I don't know if anybody... Audrey, do you have any? Yeah, I know that you spoke with Marty on this.
We specifically talked about setting up, we didn't talk about necessarily the cleanup. So, it's basically what Mike has said, it still involves staff time, and sometimes it's on Saturdays or Sundays, and we have to pay the staff to be there during those hours, so they could, they could choose to rent the entire day, and give themselves that time to be able to do the setup and tear down, or, you know, shorten their window of the actual event time, but we need to be recovering our fees.
All right, may I add to that?
Sure. I just have a question, most events take place on the weekends, so far be it for us to say how scheduling anything should bill, but Mike, it doesn't make any sense not to have staff actually scheduled on the weekend, you know, that makes more sense to me, because all those big events happen on Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And they are covered by staff when they're scheduled events.
Yeah.
When, when they have an event, and they wanna set up the day before, we work with them, but if they, they say they're gonna be there at three to five, our staff is there, we don't charge them, they come in, they set up, if they come in at four o'clock and say, we're gonna be here till seven, setting up, we don't have the staff available, we're paying them overtime to stay on board, they've got plans, you know, so it's a, it's a back and forth with whoever's doing the event, I mean, I have to say that we do our best to, these, these fees are low compared to renting another venue, so we wanna have events there, but we have to cover our costs.
Yeah, like I said, just for me, for the realization, you know, for me to understand, you know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, full coverage makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, instead of having someone work and then have to take off during midweek and all this other stuff, but that's your guys' thing to figure out first. But, that's what I'm saying, if we're losing money by paying overtime, by having them there on the weekends, to me, it makes no sense to not have someone actually scheduled to be there, because actually tourism, to me, is on the weekends, not the weekdays.
Yeah, and for the most part, we do have coverage between Veronica and Marty, they schedule and they're there, right?
But if their expectation is to be done by seven o'clock, because the event was four hours, it was supposed to end at seven, and those were the hours that made up their forty-hour week, but then it takes another couple of hours, then we're paying overtime.
Yeah, and if we, I think if there's just a way to pre-plan that, and that's disclosed in the beginning, I think those arrangements can be made with that party that's renting it.
Correct.
And I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've had very many, if any, real complaints come to City Hall about any of those sorts of issues, I know that you apparently are aware of something, but again, we don't know all of those circumstances, apparently you do.
I think if it's just explained to the, to the user of it, that we have to have city staff there for all the time that you're there, so that's why we have to charge this time if you're beyond the time that you paid for, so I think as long as that's very clear to them, then they have that understanding that they have to get out by the time that they've agreed to, because it doesn't sound like, from what, what I'm hearing, doesn't sound like that was well explained to them.
Right.
And so, they're just like, well, we're cleaning up, we're doing the work, the city's not doing the work, why are we paying for that time, so it makes sense more what you're saying, we're just thinking this is really clear.
Any further discussion, or permission? That being said, is, is the bill the council that we, they pass as as is, or have a discussion and potentially consensus vote regarding the river construction and river outfitter fees, I just, I feel it'd be more pertinent to pass it with those listed as TBA, if we don't have the ordinance in place?
That makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that. So, do we just have a consensus vote?
As amended, I think the motion would be, and I think TBD would be determined, right? I think you said to announce.
I was just, I was testing. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for item D.
I'll make the motion to proceed as amended with TBD for two items stated.
And a second?
Second.
Councilwoman, sorry, Councilman Trejo and Councilwoman Ogletree for the motion a second, with that, we'll hear the vote when you're ready, Kim.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Item D, consideration of estates at Rancho Duran, Phase One Development Agreement, Mr. Mason?
Against.
Mr. Pasta. So, this is the development agreement for the four lots that we discussed in Phase The, like I said before, the improvement plans, the engineering costs have been submitted and accepted by the city for the city water, gas, and electrical power utility extensions, also improvements to store drainage structures, streets, and landscaping, right now, there's no concern on the capacity of these utilities for the four lots, I mentioned as well, they're on septic, and then as required by municipal code, the act can supply the city a performance bond, or a letter, or a revocable letter of credit for 120% of the engineer cost estimates, that is for the water and drainage structures, and then for the gas and power, the developer will pay 50% of the estimated costs for the extension of gas, electrical power, because those are done by city forces, and then they get an invoice, once the installation is complete, the improvement's done, so it's a pretty straightforward agreement, not too complex, it just gives a, this needs to be in place prior to any construction on the, on the development. Here for any questions?
Any questions or any other questions, sir?
I have none.
I have none.
No, Mr. Shu?
No, sir.
I think that common areas, when this is all done and there's an HOA, common area maintenance is gonna go to an HOA.
If, if there were to be an HOA, that's correct. Um, there, there hasn't any into, we haven't talked about them doing that. So I think they're, they'll just be in full for the city. Once, once the completions are done, they'll be, the city will be responsible for them, yes. So it'd be a public street, public utility.
The common areas that are part of...
Oh, the common area, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, yeah, they, that will remain with the developer, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood, you're right.
I like that the spender required says "in a," that's always good. I, I don't know if this question's really tangent to this or not, so, sorry. Sorry if it's overreaching, but there's been, um, quite a few constituents that are concerned about the driving surfaces that have been impacted by utility improvements there. When, when are those, to your knowledge, when are those planned on being addressed?
Where, uh...
I, I don't have it offhand.
Okay. So for this development, it's gonna be at Morse Canyon. And actually, these utility extensions, it's, it is a little ame, in the fact that they're actually gonna be ran along the road. So there will be no cuts in the road, actually, because, um, there's no other development, really, along that section, Morse Canyon, other than to the west, I guess, oh, which is owned by the developer as well. But the other side of the street's just the school. So there's not really much, there's not, there's no reason to rent utilities right down the middle of the road.
Okay.
When, so that, that's, that piece, um, no, I don't know, because this developer does have quite a bit, quite a bit going on. So, they have Montoya Way, which is under construction. And I don't think there's been too many cuts in that one yet. Other, I don't think there's been any, actually, cuts. So is maybe the Saddle Road Sewer, is that what you're...
I believe that's what it's...
Yeah, um, I believe, Bob might have to help me out with this one, but, um, I believe it's been patched this, just like last week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I believe we, they, because, yeah, they got the punch list today, so, yeah, they should've had it patched.
All right, I have no further questions. I'll entertain a motion for item E.
Come on.
Uh, Mr. Shu, a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilman Thurman, when you're ready for the vote, can?
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehel?
Yes.
Ogilvy?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. So item ten, um, we had our, not this meeting, but one prior. We've had our last report from outgoing interman, city manager Mike Valentine. Again, um, I don't intend to overstate it, but sincerely, thank you for everything you've done and putting us on the force that you have. And with that, we'll have our first, potentially first, report from the new city manager and another from our city attorney.
So, um, thank you, once again. I stayed most of my report earlier in the agenda, so just wanna follow up again by saying thank you to city council for the opportunity. Thanks to Mike for this week. I'm looking forward to following up with you in two weeks on how the first thirty days are going. And I'll be reaching out to you on Thursday and Friday this week to get you on the calendar so I can start sitting down with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor Proto and council members. I wanna say, you know, Donna is retired, and, um, I just wanna say that I wanna congratulate her on a wonderful career and congratulate her on making it to retirement. City Hall is gonna be a very different place without her. And it's gonna be, it's just, it's hard to imagine City Hall without Donna. So I just wanna, and I know Donna may not be, be back there, I can't, well, she's back there. But, but anyway, I wanna wish her well, and I wanna say thank you for putting up with me for the last almost thirteen years. That couldn't have been easy. To Mike, words fail me in terms of my appreciation for you and everything you've done, everything you've been to the city, and I'm gonna miss you. Most importantly, I'm gonna miss seeing you every day, and you're, you're a class act. You have been wonderful to work with, and I, I thank you for everything. I think you've counseled me more than I've counseled you. And I'm your lawyer, so seriously, thank you. Like, I'm glad you have a...
I'm not gonna cry.
Yeah, I'm gonna try not to, either. Yeah, I know you're, I'm glad you have family here, that's, that's wonderful. But thank you for everything, Mike. I, I, again, I'm sure I'm gonna miss you. And last, but certainly not least, congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
Welcome. This is very exciting, and anything I can do to help. Yeah, great to have you here, and thus far. But that is all I have. I know...
Thank you for the brevity. That includes item ten. With that, we'll, um, have, uh, item eleven, executive session, and there will be no further decisions or votes made past this point. So, uh, thank you for attending tonight's meeting.